10:18 combined work and regular session. Please silence and shut off your cell phones. Before we do the pledge, I'm going to dedicate this meeting today to my good friend Commissioner Kestner. I mean, I'm a little nervous today. It's too bold for me to say it. I was trying to say Commissioner Shown first. You can sit right there. I'll go there. But I'd like to dedicate this meeting today to both commissioners that have served 12 years of their time. And later on today, we'll have a few snacks, but truly a dedicated meeting for two people that sit in these positions elected by the populace of Lake County is, that's monumental. You, the three of us are the longest tenure commissioners ever Lake County seen, and I believe in the state of Oregon as a, as a group, the number of years is probably the longest. I haven't checked on that, but anyways, I might go ahead and do the pledge. Sorry for that break a moment at first. I always thought things.
That's awesome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible in liberty and justice for all. Public comment, 10 o'clock. Nobody wants to follow by?
It's hard to follow.
Very hard to follow.
Opening was, was one that lasts a lifetime.
Yeah.
Even on the bloopers and funniest videos, all that.
It's all good.
It was well set.
I wish that you were a mind reader, Jake.
Oh, I am. I am.
Okay, so, what's Jake Collins?
He just walked out.
Okay, so we have additions or deletions?
Yes.
Go ahead with additions.
We have two additions, recommendation to the governor for a district attorney and a fair board member recommendation.
Okay, so, and I know that Jay's got a very busy morning, so I'm going to bring him right up on the addition, first name, and the addition I'm going to take hit on is recommendations to the governor for the district attorney's position.
Okay, so the panel that was appointed to interview the two district attorney candidates has done so. They interviewed them on Monday and Tuesday. After the interviews and doing some background checking and reference checking, the panel's recommendation to the governor is to reopen the position and solicit more applicants. I've prepared a letter to send to the governor, and I'll submit that to you now. If that meets with your approval, then you can sign it and we'll send it. Otherwise, we can make some changes to it. Your recommendation.
As I said on that panel and heard the panel and the recommendations, I'm in full support of it. I know you've talked individually to Commissioner Kestner, Commissioner Shown. I told you guys to keep me straight today.
We're trying.
I'll leave and read.
Take a moment and regain your composure, Commissioner.
Well.
Got it?
Yeah.
There you go.
So, by consensus, we will move that letter forward?
Yes.
If you have it, we can sign our A now. Put that in the record.
That would be great, Mrs. Shaw. I will email it actually, so they have it today.
And Jay, I believe you're going to do a follow-up call with Asha that works in the governor's office?
Yes.
Thank you. And would you be sure and send out a thank you to the panel that took their time for a few days?
Yeah.
Are you those names to Melanie? She can send it out, whichever course best.
How do you know, my friend? Thanks for all your hard work.
So, we have on our agenda the Oster extension. Mr. Cromer, you've got your name down.
I think he said Mrs. Castman. How do you?
Me, too.
I am never going to lose this one.
Yeah.
So, for the record, Commissioner Shown, I have truly enjoyed working with you. Your calm leadership skills are very valuable, and how you build consensus is very admirable. I just think your vision for Lake County and all of what you've done nationally and at the state level has really made a name for us and will continue to for quite a while, especially with hopefully the passage of the Fresh Act, which your name should be all over again. So, again, thank you for your service. I've enjoyed the debates, I think, probably more so than anything I don't know if most people probably see us talking in your office. And I think some of those debates and our agreeing to disagree that move on with what we think is best for everybody has been, again, an honor for me. So, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
So, Oster Professional Group asked for an extension for our audits. Typically, our audits are due at the state and federal level by December 31st. Oster is short-staffed at the moment, and they asked to make their school district audits the priority because of state school funding requirements that are tied to audits. And so, they asked for a one-month extension, which will not affect any of our state or federal funding or our ability to receive the CAFR award through GFOA. So, it all it does is require our audit to be filed by January 31st.
No, I think, I think that's a very reasonable request. As we know, in the audit business, it's getting harder and harder for entities that have to be audited to find audit firms, and this firm has served us well. I think it's a good acknowledgement of that.
So, let's do this one by motion being the audit extension. I'll make a motion that we extend a 30-day extension to the Oster Professional Group as requested.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the 30-day extension. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is a cooperative agreement with Summer Lake Irrigation District. Dave was not able to attend today, had pre-arranged some time to be off, so I actually had sat with the Summer Lake Irrigation District as we negotiated some of the terms of this, Dave negotiated some terms of this cooperative agreement between Summer Lake Irrigation District and Lake County. This is at Anna Reservoir, where we've had an agreement for years, where we have a boat launch, and we have restrooms, vaulted toilets up there. This here actually will expand, as you, I don't know if the exhibit's on here, expand a little bit more area. It's a great opportunity for, for people in that area, passers-through to the utilized area, and for us to continue to leverage parking rent funds, marine funds. So, I would recommend that we enter into this agreement.
That's a motion?
I'll make a motion to do the cooperative agreement between Summer Lake Irrigation District and Lake County as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, Commissioner, you have any questions?
No, I, on the remote side of it, I've kind of kept up to date on what you all were working on. Good deal.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have OLCC application to H agent. This is to ratify. This is brought before us, before we tabled it, waiting for the sheriff's office to be able to do their review, which they've done a review, they had no issues with it. I signed it, so this is, I'll make a motion to ratify the signature of the OLCC application to the H agent.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to ratify the signing of the application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I dedicated the meeting to you and another commissioner, and I'm doing all the motions. I don't know.
That's quite all right.
That's quite all right?
Yep.
All right. All right, the next is the Mental Health Advisory Board makes recommendations for people set on the advisory board to the full board of commissioners, which is the mental health authority. So, we have an application before us, and I don't believe anybody from the advisory group was coming. Alexis Johnson is applying to fill a position.
Is she a high school student?
She's a high school student, yes.
Alexis Johnson?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation for Alexis Johnson to be on the Mental Health Advisory Board.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Alexis Johnson to the Mental Health Advisory Board. Further discussion? It's always encouraging whenever the younger people are willing to step up and set on these, so that's, that's good thing.
Especially since the board's pretty, very active in making decisions for the wilderness center as well as the recovery center and public health.
Well, I liked her comment, Jake and Commissioner, she said she wanted to be able to give the students perspective on life.
That's exciting.
And I think that's a good view to have.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, Dan, would you like to talk about the Central Oregon Collaborative at this point?
Yes, Commissioner. We are members of a five-county collaborative that is involved with the Deschutes National Forest. The Deschutes National Forest, for our purposes, I don't need to go into the other counties, but for our purposes, comes into our northernmost part of the county, the forested landscape that needs treatment, needs, needs coordinated activity. And so, about a year ago, we agreed to be a partner in that collaborative, and in doing so, it was proportional to the land base, but I think we contributed some, just over $2,000 for the makeup of the board or the group that was going to oversee the cohesive strategy activities for this collaborative. And it's kind of evolved. They do now have a director onboard that they hired, and they've been in communication with Lake County, and they plan to, and they will be available, just for the record, with just a phone call, to come down, particularly with the new board of commissioners, and describe kind of what their vision is. But the recommendation I'm going to make today kind of ties that together for Lake County's participation. Each county has allotted two positions on the board of directors, and one of those is kind of an at-large position, and the other one's going to be a county governmental position. And as Commissioner Winters and I have discussed, and I've discussed with Joe Stotler from Central Oregon, we felt at best, because of the incoming commissioners, it doesn't have to be a commissioner, but they prefer a county-elected official or a governmental official, I should say. And so, the thought is, is to leave that to the, to the new board to make the decision on that position. The other position, I'm very comfortable to support right now, the at-large to the Fremont-Wineemas National Forest Cohesive Strategy Coordinator, Amy Marcus. Amy's been heavily involved in this, as Ann alluded to, some of the work that we've been working on here in Lake County nationally was the development through the Wildlife and Fire Leadership Council of the Cohesive Strategy itself. And Amy has been, with her leadership, has been leading the Fremont-Wineema and all the other partners in, in implementing that. So, she's, she's in lockstep with exactly what the Central Oregon Collaborative was doing. Joe is very excited, he's had some pretty in-depth discussions with her and believes she'd be a perfect fit. And quite honestly, I think eventually we'll find that, you know, it's not about being the leader, but by default, because of the dedication between Central Oregon and South Central Oregon, we will be the leader nationally in, in the cohesive strategy and implementation, which essentially, for, for those who don't know, those that are at home, it's, it's based on the principles of, of restoring and then having a implementable plan to maintain these landscapes that have ravaged the West with these large catastrophic high-cost fires through good, appropriate management. And the principle is based on all hands, all lands. So, it's coordinated in a collaborative fashion, and as I said, I think we will be the leaders in that in the future, and I think Amy will play a very large role in that with her expertise and background. So, I'm making a recommendation to you that we appoint her to that one position, leaving the other position for the new board to make a decision on.
Very, very appropriate, and so, we were able to do that as, as board to represent this part.
Yep.
So, your motion is to appoint?
Amy Marcus.
I'll second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Amy Marcus to the Central Oregon Collaborative. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So, Commissioner, I'd like to have Melanie, if she would, send Joe an email after the meeting today, just saying we've taken that action into CCing with that.
And just a question, not knowing the agency she worked with allows the travel and everything.
Yes. Yeah, that was the first step before it was even proposed to the board, was the outreach to her supervisor, Chuck Burley, and I was copied on all those emails, and he said, absolutely.
That, once again, that's where we thank you for your connections, work with the federal agencies in making these things happen. You get it thorough, you think it out, and make sure it's done appropriately. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Airport solar transmission easement. Once again, Dave is off, so I'm sort of carrying the ball on this. This is the easement for the solar development out at the airport. This has been reviewed by legal counsel, and it is all good to go, and we're getting at the final stages of that development happening out there.
Yeah, that's good, Dan.
I believe you've probably talked with Laura Hutchinson or seen any emails.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So. I will make a motion to accept the transmission facility's easement, airport solar, as presented and reviewed by legal counsel.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The second part of that, sorry, the second part of that is the landowner estoppel certificate. This also has been sent to legal counsel. This is a requirement that the developer and the investors require. Had it reviewed by legal counsel, seen no problems. So, I'll make a motion to accept and sign the landowner estoppel certificate as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have fair board recommendations. Fair board has put forward, recommending the following for the board of commissioners' approval to appoint to the board. Reappoint Tilly Flynn, term ending December 31st, 2021. Sean McAllister, reappoint him, term ending December 31st, 2020. Nancy Albertson, reappoint, term ending December 31st, 2021. And Buddy Ness, reappoint, term ending December 31st, 2021. All those are reappointments. They follow the guidelines of the bylaws and are supportive to move forward for the board to appoint.
I'll move that we make those appointments.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to make appointments as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Please thank the board members for their service and their continued service, one way or two served, so.
Thank you, yes.
And your service on the board.
Okay, we have minutes. We have several different sets of minutes. We did find one set, I don't think, in having front of me, that we need to also get approved. Can't remember that date, was that, that was an October date, wasn't it?
10/29.
Yep. Okay. And then we have December 4th, December 5th.
Yep.
Is that it?
I'll move that we approve minutes of December 4th, or October 29th, December 4th, and December 5th as, as that.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded, approved minutes as stated. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We have one other.
I'm going to get this right, Commissioner Shown.
Oh, okay.
You had something that you was going to bring forward for next week as far as work scheduled.
Yes, I'd like to propose for your consideration, Commissioner, that next Monday is Christmas Eve, and that's a regular holiday. The following Monday is New Year's Eve, it's not a regular holiday, and I would like to propose and allow some planning by departments, department heads and employees that we close the courthouse or we allow for time off starting at noon on December 31st for all of our employees that are able to be off.
Okay, so the motion is to give admin leave on New Year's Eve, December 31st, from 12:00 noon on. Those that already have scheduled time will, that'll reflect probably on their vacation that they're taking.
Right.
So, it'll be reduced amount of vacation.
Yep.
And so, I will second your motion.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow admin leave. That means leave with pay, shut down the courthouse on December 31st from noon on, and other departments that it impacts.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
No, if we approve it, just that we, we make sure we post appropriately the entry doors and notify everyone, so that they're playing.
Very good, and for those unique departments that can't take off, we've always had those departments work with their department head and with our HR to make sure that we are being fair to all.
Exactly.
So, we want to make sure that the people that can't take the time off, they'll reflect some other time when they're able to utilize it.
Yeah.
Right? Any further?
Well, just that we, I seriously doubt that the court will have anything going on that they're coordinating with our state partners here in the courthouse. They don't know that's, because there was a question that comes up about the blocking of the doors, and I know as long as we have people that have to be here, we can't lock the doors, or I don't believe we can.
Correct. The state, the state system upstairs, court system runs by their own state guidelines, and they generally do not have some of the holidays off or the admin leave that we do. So, we have to keep the doors unlocked. We can do that electronically, though.
Yeah.
Right? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Liaison updates. Department updates. Got to drag this out for another half hour and five minutes? No? No department updates. Liaison updates. Thank you for reappointing the fair board. The fair board is continuing to work progressively. We're applying for a grant, they did a master plan, put together, it's closer than we've been for quite some time. Working on, our department head is working with SCOED, Oregon, Business Oregon, and working with them. That's the start of really being able to do our apply and try to do some large projects at the fairgrounds. Doesn't mean they will happen, but if we get the master plan done, and if we do it in a phased way, gives us opportunity to apply for the grants, we can check the box that we have a master plan and continue to work forward. So, I'd like to say, Dan, over, over your years, your support of the fairgrounds has been exceptional, and just to reassure you, we're going to continue, because we know that that is the one thing that brings all of Lake County together, and thank you for your support. Just an update there, we're doing that. We're, we're setting out our guidelines that have things appropriately ready for fair summer and everything, so we're working quite progressively up there. Other liaison updates. I'm setting as a cooperating agency person on wilderness characteristics. The MOU has not been brought to us to sign wilderness characteristics on the VLM. I was not able to attend a meeting this week, but conflict, they knew that. Continuing to be at the table. The inventory is done, inventory is spotted, is, I personally am very challenged with that, and we'll probably reach out even further, because I don't believe that my personal use is correct. Myself and other cooperating agency people sitting there, I believe we've done some good work as the VLM folks are categorizing, categorizing things and putting things in place with existing inventory. We're trying to make sure our permittees, our recreation, just the general use of those lands is kept open the best we can. As the new board comes on, there's room for them to get involved also, and this is, this is one thing that is very big on our public lands, our young ones up here, so continuing to work on that.
So, Commissioner, I commend you for your involvement, and I think it's incredibly important, and I think you made a statement just a little bit earlier on the inventory and the basically on happiness, that the group at large feels with that, and I sure do appreciate those sentiments and believe there's precedence. It's almost like Groundhog Day for all of us, in that we go back to an inventory that was done on road systems, on the federal lands, for certain side of things, and it was brought to us as a done deal, and there was no way to undo that. And, you know, the precedence is, is that, as you talked about, outreach to maybe higher levels. I'm hopeful that the group is successful in that, because it's, it's going to be very, very impactful the way they've done it, and it hasn't been done correctly, and it needs a do-over. So, stay strong.
We're, we're at a juncture where, and as a cooperating agency, we haven't signed MOU, yet, but as a cooperating agency, we are bound by guidelines and rules and things you're able to talk about and do as a cooperating agency. At this, this point, I feel comfortable visiting and talking, making public statements. But yes, I will continue to.
Well, at the end of the day, it's public policy that they're attempting to put and cast into stone and make permanent, and there's an opportunity to get it right.
Yeah. So, you have no liaison updates?
No. Well, I was just gonna, I was gonna say a few things, I don't know if you've acknowledged it.
Well, this, our meeting went much faster. I have a letter that needs to be read to you, but I would like to wait until 11:00, so I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest that we recess and come back to open meeting for me to be able to make a few comments on your and Commissioner Kestner's tenure. I'd like to do that in a public setting. I'd like for some employees invited to come down at 11:00 and have doughnuts and stuff, so.
Can I have doughnuts before then?
No.
Melanie slap my hand.
I already, Garrett and I already hit them. So, we're going to take a recess until... So we're going to take a recess until right at eleven.
Okay.
Thing that Commissioner Shown brought forward earlier and will accept it. New Year's Eve, we'll close the courthouse with admin leave at noon. So thank Commissioner Shown for bringing that forward. Did dedicate today's meetings to Commissioner Shown, Commissioner Kestner for their twelve years of service. And so I wanted to open the meeting back up because we have a couple of things for both Commissioners. Commissioner Kestner was not able to make it today, so it's going to go primarily towards So Commissioner Shown, the employees and all of us, here's a card. Here's a small gift. And a Blake commemorizing your twelve years of service.
Nice.
And.
Melon got the donuts all over her.
Melon. And here's a plaque.
Oh, wow.
Dedicated to position number two.
It says three.
No.
Oh.
No. No, but just because I made a few mistakes, but I have made a few, also have for Commissioner Kestner, which is not here today.
Nice.
Very nice.
Thank you. Just see all of us standing.
So I have quite a bit to say. Try to stay focused and composed as I do this. Twelve years working with these two have been, been a pride that I would take the ride again. The dedication of Commissioner Shown is unbelievable. The honesty, integrity, the loyalty, the friendship. I would say it's without saying, but have to say it. Over my time here, he's, when he first came on, he, I'd come to him with some drama, family drama, outside drama, courthouse drama. He'd tell me to flush it. We all know some of these things and he said, that stuck with me. I don't use that handle near enough, but I tried to flush a few things. Thank you for that. If he hasn't told you this, he will at some time. If it's something that's possibly a little bit controversial or he's not going to engage, he'll say, copy. And I've appreciated that many times over the years too. I don't know how many of you have done this, but I've had to drive in my own lane a time or two. And I think Commissioner Shown is the one that taught us that, driving our own lane. One thing that if you walk by his window, and we all need to take advantage of this, have a good day if you want to. That's our choice. Thank you for that. The time that, the friendships I did, I like to talk about. Had a family member, my father-in-law, very ill, Alzheimer's. Showed up a couple times at the courthouse. I'd be in meetings, no idea why he's here, you know, didn't really know that he was ill. Get him, get him where he needs to go. Well, progressed. I'm out standing on the sidewalk visiting with a county employee. For some reason, you know, the good Lord holds you up at times. I get this call from Denise and said, you might want to come back in. And here's my good friend, Commissioner Shown. Denise sat down having a visit with my father-in-law. He didn't know where he was at. The respect that he showed to my family is unbelievable. Thank you for that. Sorry I'm emotional. She's a very dear friend. Means a lot to me. And I can't, can't say everything because I can't remember it all. In twelve years, it's happened. So with that, I do have a letter that was brought forward. Whoever read it, I try to do my best. If I can. Dated December fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and I think some of the things in here will sum up from a lot of us. Commissioner Shown, I'm so sorry that I'm unable to attend today, today's session. I wanted to take a few minutes to thank you for your many years of dedicated service to Lake County and our citizens. Few really know the positive long-term effects your tenure as Commissioner will have on our beautiful county. But as I was lucky enough to witness your work firsthand, you always had a knack for being in the right place at the right time. For those not lucky enough to have, had the opportunity to get to know you or have worked with you, I would say that they have truly missed out. Few people have touched and influenced my life as you have. In my time worked with you, I learned more about our public lands and how to work with multiple agencies than I ever thought possible. No one has ever shown the amount of honesty and integrity for not only holding public office, but for being an amazing person as you. I witnessed you over and over weighing out the potential effects of the decisions that had to be made. I saw the compassion you would show individuals expressing concerns or just simply struggling. You always took the time to listen and then to explain. Always willing to answer any question and doing so with patience and respect. Making decisions based on what was best for the county as a whole, researching and meeting with the public to gather input in order to gain an understanding of all sides of issues presented. There were some tough conversations. You handled them all with calm, understanding, and respect. Although I have complete, I have complete faith in those coming behind this January, they won't have your style or that surprisingly sense of humor that we know. I think the first time I heard sarcasm from you, I about fell out of my chair. There was a seemingly serious soul-cracking, a joke. It was the best. I didn't know if I should continue taking minutes or to simply turn off the recorder. Thank you, Commissioner, for your kindness, your attendance to our county's needs and your wisdom for knowing the best corrections to send Lake County in. Thank you for your time in DC and for taking the time to meet with those influential parties for bringing our county forward. You very much impressed me every day that I spent working for you. I know you will continue to work on our behalf even after the closing of this chapter. Also, thank you to Noreen for sharing you with all of us. I know, I know it couldn't have been easy over all these twelve years to do so and remain smiling. Congratulations and good wishes to you both. Be well, be happy, have a great day, only if you want to. That was from Denise. So now since I've done all the blurb, anybody wanna say anything? If not, that's fine. Do you have a few words?
Ditto to that. I already said something earlier, but I'll say one term that I think was missed so far in what we talked about this morning, and that's cautiously optimistic. And I think Dan is the most optimistic, positive leader that I've had the chance to work with. And at times, that is so needed because we all get beat up every now and then. And so to keep that optimism and to keep that vision of how great Lake County is at the forefront is a gift and I will miss that for sure. So thank you for your commitment.
That's from my wife.
Oh.
For you, Noreen, I agree. Oh, boy. So with that, go ahead.
What else will be missed, Commissioner? Is that, that morning commute when we're heading north or heading south, either way, the green glory, your car. And you're straight up at attention, ten o'clock, two o'clock with your left hand just kind of coming up the steering wheel as a quick wave and back to ten o'clock, two o'clock. Nevertheless, driving well under the speed limit. Barely exceeding fifty-three. And I know from past experience, when you carry the GPS with you to, to see how it works, we know that your walk with your wife up the canyon, that pace was much faster than your automobile went on by. But again, thank you for your dedication and your service to Lake County. We appreciate you.
I had the pleasure of meeting Dan and, you know, the other Commissioners back when I was at the radio station. And sometimes they were a little timid when they get behind a microphone for our little interviews that we did. And that was really kind of my only way of knowing really what was going on in the county, being at the radio station. And who knew that I would be, you know, working here and, you know, getting to kind of hang out with them every now and then and talk shop and sports. I've never seen anybody that is so passionate about both the beavers and the ducks. Either you're one or the other. He's truly, he pulls for both sides, so. But that was, that was just a fun thing, to be able to interview you guys. I always looked forward to it, so.
So I heard you calling a politician that walks the fence.
That's what you heard. I didn't say that.
So with that, Mel, did you?
I just have something quick to add. Maybe not.
It's okay.
Pause it here.
Yep.
Copy. We can't say enough. Twelve years, I have a friend for life. So with that, we're going to adjourn our meeting and we're just going to shut off the camera unless you want to.
I'm gonna try.
You go try, okay. So we're still, we're still on.
I might need to blanket into the chair because I get emotional too, but. What do they call those pauses?
Pregnant?
Yeah. I think pauses. Mine's not. I just want to be sure. Can say a few things. I, I think in not saying everything probably today that I would, it's.
It's okay, my friend, we're all county family.
I gotta do that. What were you supposed to do with the audience?
I got my clothes.
Jake, can you mark? You must move to the front side. I can't get it out of my head. It's actually, it is bittersweet. It was time. I, I told a friend of mine the other day at the Safeway, because it's been mentioned, my dry sense of humor. But we were in Safeway and, and he was talking to me about, you know, feeling, feeling bad that I was gonna be leaving and so on and so forth. And I said, well, you know, it's kind of like the stuff on the shelf. It's all has an expiration date. And it was my time. Doesn't mean that I'm leaving, not enjoying it, not enjoying the friendships, the discussions, the visits, the, all of the things that go with, with our county family. But it was just time. So I feel very blessed to be leaving under those circumstances, not just running for reelection and not being voted in type feeling. The fact that I was able to take my time when I wanted to, to leave does feel good. But the real, the real honor for me, besides all of the friendships, and I do consider all of you friends, is the county family here, and a lot of people say these kind of things and they're kind of cliche, but I wouldn't trade our county for any county in the state or anywhere. And I've been around to a lot of them. We have some of the absolute best, most dedicated employees in, who really do come to work with the mindset of wanting to serve the people and serve each other. And what's really neat is we are a small county and people have specific jobs, whether they're elected officials or they're department heads or the employees, the staff in those departments. But when something is needed, everyone steps out. There's never a shortage. There's never a, we can't do that. It's, this is how we're gonna get it done. And just, you know, as one example, and it's just one, but I mean, there's, there's literally been hundreds of them over the twelve years that I've been in office. And usually I have nothing to do with it, so I can speak clearly about it, that it's about all of you. Because it's nothing, even though there's been a lot of kind words said here, there's nothing that I've done. There's a whole bunch that we've done. The fairgrounds, and I'm, as I said, I'm just using one example because there are tons of them, but the fairgrounds and the work that you all did this fall in order to show the pride that you have in our county, for our citizens, because that's what it was about. And all of you that worked tirelessly under really tight timeframes to make that happen and the amount of appreciation that's been explained throughout our county as a result of that. Those things happen over and over and over. And it's just, like I said, it's, it's been my honor to be part of this team. And I know you're all going to do even bigger and better things as we go forward in the years to come. While Commissioner Winters just talked about driving in my lane, I do try to do that. So I understand I'm going out of office. I won't be trying to drive in county leadership lane, nor do I need to, but I will be paying attention to what's going on because I am so proud of what the work all of you do. And I'm looking forward to all of the wonderful things that will be happening. Because at the end of the day, we're never, any of us is ever going to be here forever. And so what most of you have subscribed to, which is service to, to your fellow employees and to the public, is the greatest compliment and reason for being here on Mother Earth that you can have because it's about people at the end of the day. I have been so, so blessed to be around so many wonderful people that have made my life, in turn, my wife's life richer. You wouldn't believe some of the discussions we have at night, even though you don't ever see her here. I don't know, she's been in the courthouse once since I've been in office and that was to see all of these improvements that our folks in our facilities group have done. It just stopped by for that, that reason and whatnot. But she's very tuned in to what you all do. And she, if she was here, she wouldn't say anything, but she'd tell you in a side comment just how much she appreciates all of you because she knows how much my life's been greatly enhanced and benefited by all of you and our relationships. So I know I have lots more to say. And there's things that I know I'm forgetting, but I do, I, I mean, I just, I have to say it over and over. I just appreciate all of you so much. You're, you're more than just colleagues that were your true friends of mine and I will never forget that. Thank you.
We're going to officially close the Commissioners' meeting at eleven.